Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. I need approval of the tentative agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? All eyes. Would you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
June second, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District trustees to view the minutes from the drainage meetings, see the drainage decrep minutes on the county website. Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine oh three A M. Members present were Cluse, Bosch, Rasmussen, Luke's and Ellis. Motion by Bosch, second by Luke's to, I'm sorry, motion by Bosch and second by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five were read and approved, approved claims for payment. In open forum, Bob Watts asked if the county negotiates interest rates for deposits. County Treasurer Peggy Schlutthorpe advised that we do for the CDs we invest funds into. County Attorney Eric Simonson requested that the attorney's office manager gets an increase in wages. He stated that his office manager has worked for the county for over twenty five years with no significant increase, leaving her vastly underpaid in comparison to both other Wright County employees and surrounding county attorney office managers. Simonson is requesting to increase the annual salary of Michelle Murphy to sixty thousand from forty eight thousand to ninety six. Supervisor Cluse asked if his budget will accommodate an increase of that amount. Simonson said that he would have to check, that he would do everything possible to ensure his budget would be okay. Motion by Bosch, second by Rasmussen to table the salary increase request until June sixteenth, twenty twenty five, to give Eric Simonson time to check his budget. Motion carries. Jeremy Abis, Assistant to the Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the Secondary Roads Department. Angelia Millsap, Assistant to the Energy, presented opposed wind turbine project in Southern Wright County. She informed the board that the project will be a multi-year collaboration of development, construction, and finally, operation, saying that the project timeline predicts operation will occur in twenty thirty. After answering questions from the board and others in attendance, Millsap explained that Representative Front and Benergy will continue to be in contact with the Board of Supervisors to provide updates on the project. Motion by Cluse, second by Luke's to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Plans have been around. Open forum for the public. Adam Clemens, you are next.
Just a quick update, apologize, our system wasn't working for the, uh, give you a map and the work orders, uh, this morning, I couldn't get it to go, so I gotta call the service bureau. Um, guys were doing routine maintenance, dust control prep, they did start on two hundred and seventieth street, the, uh, road to Rotary Inn, going into Eagle Grove. It did, they only had one day and it started raining on them, so they're gonna keep working on that, but they only shut down the first like mile, half mile, so we're working with that. Um, gonna just pull the shoulders or kind of do a marking cut, we're gonna wait, uh, and make agreements with the rest of the landowners on where we don't need as much dirt to bring that road up, so we'll be able to roll it back out into the fields, so we're gonna work with them on that. Uh, trucks are hauling the year two rock, they've gotten, uh, nine thousand seven hundred fifty four tons, fifty three out of eighty eight miles done, completed on that. Uh, there was fifteen work orders completed, uh, last week, and the, uh, construction for the Boss Quarry Bridge, uh, they poured both rails. Have that done, they'll be pouring the wing, uh, extensions to for the guard rail. To be coming in today, uh, today and probably tomorrow, so, um, and then we'll be working on approaches, doing all the, the grade work.
You guys do the grade work?
Nope.
They do all that?
Yeah.
They do the, the guardrail also?
No, that'll be, uh, that'll, the metal guardrails and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, so, any, usually it's a D B, disadvantaged business enterprise, so.
So, so they, they poured the rail and then they do the bridge rail and then the wing extensions, the contractor does?
Yep.
And then they're done?
Well, they'll do, they'll have the bridge approach, um, that they've got to do all the backfill for, all the grade work, um, in the ditches, um, do all the burners and everything like that, and then I think there's a subcontractor for the, um, bridge approaches too.
And is that blacktop or is that floor?
Uh, concrete.
Concrete.
Yeah. That'll be concrete, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Schlutthorpe, Wright County Treasurer, to discuss implementation of banking programs.
Benny, those are fun, you watch.
Yeah, the only other one that would be interesting is to see how public health is doing, but that's, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Oh, I can do it for you.
Okay.
I just went off an old note, wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, well, and public health fund is different as newer, so.
Yeah, and it's like old, old.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I had two programs on my patchy about today. The first one I've already signed up for or started. It is the positive thing. So, I was at Treasurer's School a couple of weeks ago, at May Treasurer's School, and a lot of counties already have this installed, a lot of counties did it after they already had trouble, so I'm trying to be proactive and get this done first, but a lot of counties have had issues of check washing, where they have taken the payday's name off and put like, instead of like, um, like, superfoods or whatever, they put Rick Rasmussen, it's got, and the check out, you're sent it in the mail, they've washed the name, they, and the county doesn't know it until they get another bill from their vendor that says, are you gonna pay us? Well, we've already got the warrant that's paid, but it didn't go to them. So, what, and another county had a four thousand dollar check mysteriously turned into a forty thousand dollar check by adding a zero. And if you don't catch it the next, very next day that it goes to the bank, you're S O L. Yeah, so their insurance side have covered that one. And they've been much bigger ones too. So, I talked to First, I met with the Treasury Department at First Citizens last Wednesday, and so they're starting to set this up for us this week. So, what it is, is that we will get, I believe, a report every morning through our online banking, where we will go through the checks that have been presented, we make sure they match of the warrants and the treasurer's checks, that they're, they're to the person that we brought them to and that they're the right amount. And then they'll let them go through. So, it, it's just a little bit more work for my department, but I think if we were to have an incident, that would be a whole lot of work for all of us. So, yeah, and no, no cost for that.
And what time does that come in? I mean, is that right at eight o'clock?
I think those come late. Very, very early in the morning.
Okay.
Is when they'll come in, yeah.
And then, so you get the report, you check it out, and then you give them the authorization, this all looks good, and then they pay.
Then they let them go through and then they pay it.
Right. So, can you work with our software provider to pull those checks in? Is there any way of that, or do you have to manually look at each one?
I'm not, I, I think there's a report that we're gonna look at, but we're gonna get that set up with Jill from Mason City's.
Okay.
Operations Department. I mean, it takes a little bit of time, but.
Yeah.
Like I said.
Thirty cents, sorry.
Yeah, four thousand turning into forty thousand or four hundred thousand, about make you throw up, I think, if you really see that.
You think?
Yeah, right. Yeah, especially if it happens on a Friday, you don't get the, the statement until Monday.
Yeah.
You're too late, it's already done. I believe it was Washington County that had a really big one, so it's not had to go through their insurance company to get it.
Because you can't find who got it.
I mean, there's a name on there, but that don't really mean much.
Can't believe they can't find, go after people that did it.
You can try, if it's the real name.
But it could be a fake, fake account.
It could be anything, yeah. And the one, I, I know there was one that got caught, simply because when you have the payday part of the check, the county, um, centers, the name, the address, all that information, the, um, bad guys left justified it. And the gal scanned them at the bank, you know, she's sitting there running checks and she's like, wow.
That's weird.
Yeah, and that's how they found it. Wow, it was all about the justification, otherwise it would have went through because it looked that good. The only mistake they made is that they centered the, the tax.
Or they left something.
No, the county left justified it and the bad guy centered it. That was the only thing.
Oops.
Weird. Yeah. Oh, so. But the scanner at the bank have that, the gal just. So, we're working on that this week, so that should be enough. The other one, I know, um, this started back in February, uh, Joan was having issues again with getting our payments to the credit card company, as nothing new. So, we, her and I started talking to this gal up at the Treasury Department at First Citizens, and because they are First Citizens credit cards, there is an online service that you can pay online, which would be another A C H warrant, which we already do. It's no big deal, and honestly, the Treasury Department, and so did the fraud gal that came to our school recommends pushing as much to A C H as you can, because checks are a huge, huge liability, the more checks you write and put in the mail, the bigger your liability is and your exposure. So, they recommend push as much as you can to A C H. So, but we're already having issues with the credit card payments anyway. We have some issues getting to Florida, we have some issues, all kinds of issues. So, we talked about this too, and it is in, it's a online account control, is what it's called, and it's, there's two levels of access, there's a basic user, so like Joan could be basic user, she would log on, she would be able to pay the bills on all the credit cards through A C H. And, um, and then there's an admin user that, um, they have complete control of the credit cards, the administrative user desk. So, they can turn cards on, they can turn cards off, they can raise limits, they can lower limits, they can, um, just everything, it'd be like you with your personal credit card. So, um, there's just two levels, we can have a two. Well, here's a copy of that application. Completely can have it, but it's a five or six users, I believe, maybe two administrators and five different users. Now, the tre, the, the gal from the Treasury Department, her recommendation would be like the Treasurer's Office be the admin, because it is actual money. It's not, it'd be just like flash, it would be like money. So, she, she would say that's a better fit to the Treasurer's Office, and then you would have Joan in the auditor's office doing the bill paying, which would be then your checks and balances, whatever the auditor's office does, matches whatever the Treasurer's Office does.
Which is what you do now.
Correct.
So, Joan would be level one, you'd be level two.
Yeah, and I would just suggest being the, the treasurer be, that, not just specifically Peggy, but every time there's a treasurer. You know, it could win the lottery, maybe. Correct.
They can act like you.
Correct, yeah, so and maybe the deputy too, I mean, maybe you make the deputy, and because between Angie and I, usually one of us is always here, you know.
But that would be my question, is it a named person or is it a position? Like if it's an elected position and their deputy, does that work or not?
It would have to be a name.
Name.
Because you're gonna sign, I can't remember what the application says, but you basically sign your life away.
Okay.
And I think too, if you have an elected official, I'm sure that your bond would cover like an errors and omissions as well. Whereas if, if it was like Joan that was in charge of the whole thing, she does not have the bond. I mean, the deputies are bonded, the, the, the officer is bonded, whereas clerks are not. But I would have the, the checks and balances with Joan would be the A C H warrant that she brings over, then we would have that check and balance at that point. And we would just have to set up some sort of system as like, if, you know, if Betty wants her limit raised or wants it lowered for whatever, there'd have to be something in writing from Betty saying, because it's her social security number that's tied to right card. So, we would have to.
But she's not, is she responsible for it, or the county is ultimately responsible for it?
The county is ultimately responsible.
I feel it's ultimately responsible, but if there, if there's late payments and stuff, that goes on her. That goes on my social security, so it goes on to my credit.
And she doesn't pay it, the county pays.
Correct. You're paying a lot of, you're putting a lot of trust and you, yeah.
So, well, it's, it's like your son having, my son having a credit card that I have a sign on, if he doesn't pay the bill, it still goes against my credit too.
Right. A lot of the problems we've had though, is with the actual credit card company not processing the checks when they get them.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, we haven't had a problem with, it's not our office not paying it.
Right.
It's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, this A C H thing should solve that.
Correct.
Okay.
It's been some postals, it's been U S Postal System, it's been them too, so I know one time Joan tried one big warrant, and then she put all the little tabs in her cards behind it. So, they gave all the money to the very first.
And nothing to the rest.
And the rest of them went default.
Yeah.
This guy's got a five grand credit, and the rest of them are in default.
Yeah.
So, then the next time she tries writing a separate warrant, and it's, and it's, you know, stub warrant, stub warrant, no, some of them got there and some of them didn't, but they were all in the same envelope. I mean, it's just been a constant battle.
Way back, when somebody found it underneath their desk.
Yeah.
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 I mean, it's been dumb, and I can't remember what the situation was in February, where we just had enough, and I got ahold of my gal at operations, and that's how we got to the Treasury Department, and that's how it was all started.
That was the one where multiple statements were sent in the same envelope, and they only crossed out one.
And they said the rest never.
And the rest never got paid, they got like these.
So, I feel like this would be.
And the time it takes to correct stuff.
And to get to Florida, yeah.
Yeah, and Joan has been on the phone for hours.
Yeah.
With the credit card company trying to figure stuff out when it doesn't get corrected, when it gets messed up.
So, you have Joan's lost time.
Yeah.
Lost all the other stuff.
So, as far as when we start talking A C H, does that cause any problems at all with, with balancing bank accounts and things like that, or trying to track stuff down?
I would tell you probably ten years ago, it was an absolute nightmare, because that's where everything started. Those first few people started wanting to go A C H. And now, my bank account has gone from like three pages to like eight to ten every day because of all the A C H payments, I mean, you figure we moved the taxes A C H, we moved motor vehicles to A C H online. Um, the credit cards, i- it's just what we do now. I spend most of my day doing bank statement. Just to hunt down payments.
And it'll help you out.
It doesn't help me out, no, but i- it puts more on me personally to balance a bank, bank statement, because there's no warrant that we just redeem and keep going, you know, but that's just the way it's going.
But it's safer for us, just like the Treasury Department told you, checks is a bad way to go, because they can be washed and that A C H is just, it's done.
It's very secure. Yeah, and I mean, it's like that fraud, we had a fraud gal out of Des Moines come and talk to us this year too, and, and she's like, you've gotta get away from paper checks as much as you can.
Well, and postage is.
Call that, and envelopes.
And envelopes and postage is so expensive.
Yeah, so if you can move, I mean, and there's, there's checks or warrants that we write that are seriously five dollars. Well, by the time you get that stamp on there, by the time you pay for that envelope, that checking almost costs you money to write, oh, and the check, the cost of check as well.
Right.
So.
So, what are the fees involved in using this?
I don't believe there are any. I need, um.
I think it was.
I know the positive pay one, but I believe this one is free as well, because it's just us logging on.
I think it said something about fees in that application.
I think the fees were to, if we have late fees.
Okay.
Then those kick in, there's nothing that you can get away from like the late fees and all that stuff. But I can double check with you for, or with First Citizens Treasury Department to make sure and get back to you.
And this is through First Citizens also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it only works with their credit cards. Though like, I know the Sheriff's Office has a credit card with somebody else, but they don't have this issue, it's only the First Citizens credit cards that have issues, because I think we already do A C H warrants for the Sheriff's Office, so.
And so, uh, I appreciate all the information, is there action that the supervisors need to take on this, or between your two offices, you guys have got it figured out?
So, what they need for this program, and this is another thing, so this is like really, um, like a secure program, so we need to have detailed minutes of this meeting saying that we agree that it shouldn't be like the tre, like my name treasurer, and maybe like Angie as deputy as maybe the administrative users, and then Joan as level two.
Level one.
Well, level one, oh yeah, level one is the basic user, yeah.
Joan is tragically lost for some reason.
Angie.
Then we.
Then, okay.
Still have access to it.
We still have access, see, all Joan will be able to do is pay the bills.
But somebody else in their office would need to do that, is my point, so should there be?
They should be on.
We can still log on, if something happens to Joan between phone and Clarion.
You can handle it.
We can still log on, now to add another user or take off a user will require board action.
Okay.
You know, that we would need new minutes saying, okay, Joan's retiring, you know, we're not gonna talk about Joan being dead all the time, but Joan retired. You know, and we need to update our agreement, now we're gonna throw Deb on, because we don't have another accounts payable for a while. So, we'll throw Deb on, we, we send them the updated minutes.
But you would be able to continue, I mean, we only meet weekly unless we call a special meeting. During that week, there's a lot of business that happens that I want to make sure that it would continue to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we could have two people as a level, level one.
Yeah, you can put more, you can put Deb as Joan's backup, like if Joan's on vacation and the credit card bills need to be paid, and do you do the accounts payable when she's running? Yeah, you make Jo, or make Deb another level one user.
Well, and, and I, I'm very glad that you guys are coming up with something, because I understand the, the time consumingness of the credit cards, and it was getting to the point of nobody gets a credit card and they just request reimbursement because of the ti- time consumingness and the non-trust of, I don't know why, why this card has so much troubles.
I don't either.
I don't get it.
I don't, I don't either, and it's both on, like I said, the mail system getting on there.
Yeah.
We think, we really don't know, though.
You don't know.
You don't know if the post office's fault or there's on, under somebody's desk again.
Right.
So.
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm surprised I'm down here asking to do something A C H, honestly.
Well, I'm pretty surprised you're here to say it, because it'd been voodoo for a long time, I've been putting this data out for ten years, you know.
Now I can't use the excuse, I'm sorry, my treasurer will not let me do this.
Yeah.
I keep doing it.
So, would you like a motion approving what you're doing for records?
And I think you need to put in that motion, the names.
The Peggy will be a level two admin user and Angie.
As treasurer and deputy.
And, uh, Joan will be a le- level one, and Deb as, uh, Deb Nessim as her backup.
Level one.
Level one.
Is that a motion?
So.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All eyes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, this will make me feel better, honestly, I think it'll make Joan and Deb feel better, I think it'll make, yeah, everybody's lives better.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. What were the key fun numbers?
Here's your thing back.
Oh, one oh, I'll get them. Hold on a second, I haven't even turned on here.
You're not?
No. Well, you know, he coming to the board, you know.
He can't dampens that, does it?
Oh, I was gonna say it does that for me, but no.
Oh, no. Okay.
Okay, any other, oh?
Oh, one, oh, one oh.
Oh, one.
Oh, one oh.
Oh, one oh, and then?
Oh, two, oh, one oh.
Okay, I'll look on those, I guess, at the table.
They will receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff from May. County car service fees and mileage. Twenty one hundred and twenty five dol, twenty five dollars and forty cents. County new and renewal weapons permit, six hundred and twenty dollars, coffee fees, ten dollars, uh, total of twenty seven hundred fifty five dollars and forty cents.
Motion to receive.
I can second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. All eyes. And let's see.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine. Yes.
Hey. Eric Rector, Wright County Conservation Director, to give update on warning sirens, their warning system at Lake Cornelia for annual maintenance calls.
So. There's several things regarding the siren. First, there should be an annual maintenance done to it. Um, the guy that I know that works on sirens, they don't work on American Signal sirens.
And that's what's at the lake?
And that's what's at the lake. He said probably in the six hundred dollar range a year. Um, and I don't know what that all entails, uh, the fact that we check it monthly during the summertime to make sure it's working. He said that's a positive thing, he said most cities, whatever, don't check their sirens. Um, so he's like, you do know that it works, um, so that's good. Um, we purchased four batteries and they'll be installed, um, they were like a hundred and twenty dollars apiece. So, and they should be replaced every four years, so you got five hundred dollars there every four years, well, current price, who knows what batteries will do in the future. The bigger issue you're gonna have is the siren's roughly twenty five, thirty years old. Um, it does not interface with the new radio system.
You, you, uh, R E, excuse me, our nine one one radio system or?
The, the new upgrade high frequent, high, whatever band that we have on the police radios now, it still transmits on, uh, V H F, uh, frequency.
To turn it on.
To, to turn it, yeah, to activate it.
To activate it.
Which means that at some point, you're probably gonna have to upgrade it if that, if that band ever has to go away.
Good.
A new siren runs anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand. That would fit that, you know, with, with the current band that we have.
True.
I have contacted radio communications or whoever, electronic engineering, they're gonna have a guy come out and look at it to see if he even wants to deal with it to maintenance it or whatever, um, but I don't have a timeframe on that. Insurance wise, um, there currently is no insurance on it, and the guy that works on them that I know said, why would you put a insurance on a siren that old? So, other than liability insurance, which I'm guessing would be covered under any way. So, that's kind of what I know. As far as that goes. Who pays for it, whatever, who runs it, who owns it, that's what you guys would decide.
Well, I honestly think, you know, it's a great benefit to, um, conservation and the campers out there, because they're kind of out there, I do know that you have the bathroom facility that's it's, is it considered storm or is it just?
The new one is, the new one is instructed to storm shelter specifications, but not storm shelter certified.
Okay, anyway, but I also feel that it is equally as important to the landowners out there around Lake Cornelia, and I would like to see a fifty fifty share on all maintenance and, and batteries on that now, when it comes to the, the new one, which it sounds like it may be coming to that point of doing a new one, I think we need to have that discussion and have good notes on, on, um, doing it, some sort of a share agreement with Lake Cornelia Association.
Yeah, I would agree that, I mean, the campground benefits, but there's also roughly four sites to the lake, and three of them are surrounded by private property, so.
Correct.
I would even suggest a seventy five, twenty five split. If I'm gonna split it.
I was trying to get somewhere where it might be agreeable with the Lake Cornelia Association, so.
There's that too.
Yeah.
They have a hundred percent ownership of the well.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right.
Buy some well, or do we have?
The well is utilized or fired. Um, and to.
Like maintenance, I mean, like, like level maintenance.
Yes.
Or something like that.
Or something like that.
So, does the Lake Association? There's some entity out there that has a waste treatment.
Sanitary sewer, yes.
And there's that, the Lake Association.
Everybody, everybody.
That is it.
That's a sanitary sewer district, and everybody around the lake, including the campground, is a member. That's a sanitary sewer district and everybody around the lake, including the campground, is a member of the sanitary sewer district.
Got you.
We all receive.
And you pay all the benefit that you receive from that?
Yeah, something like that.
And they also pay a, a property tax. A levy rate. For that.
Specifically for?
Yes.
If they don't pay their assessment, they can, they file with me to. Like if you had a house up there and they didn't pay it. They'll file it with me and then I can take it to tax sale too.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how, I mean, obviously this is a discussion that I have. Yeah, and also.
Right.
Right now, we don't have to buy a new siren and sirens still works. But at some point, when you do have to buy a new siren.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Who's gonna pay for it and. It needs to be upgraded so it can run off the.
Mm hmm.
New frequencies. That siren actually does more than I thought it did. It, it has three or four different codes that you could. Oh, like do a storm, just like a severe storm warning, not a tornado warning. But a severe storm warning or. Get people off the lake, like when they had the drowning, they could have broadcast. The way I understood it, they could have broadcast telling everybody to get off the lake.
Like verbally? Interesting.
Yeah, if it's tied to the radio system, that's what I assume too, and that's why that would be.
So.
So with the new siren, there's not just like an upgrade that they could do, they would have to replace the siren completely. You know, kind of like a computer, how you can just like upgrade the software.
The interior of that is, again, electronics are thirty years old, twenty five years old. It's still, it, it sounds to me like you're saying it's still on an analog system where we went to a digital system.
Okay.
With the radios, so, and you may be able to do that, but. I, I'm not an electronic person. That would be a question for the electronic engineering people when they come.
Who paid for the four batteries that you purchased?
Well, currently it's on the conservation boards bill, which I don't have a problem paying them. It's just moving forward, it needs to be set in stone, who's paying for what.
And are we required to do this annual maintenance?
You're not required. But.
A good thing to do.
If, if, if you have annual maintenance in place, you at least knew it was working when it doesn't work. That you had checked it prior to. Right, ten years ago. So your liability. In that litigious society that we have today. Would be.
But you test it monthly already.
They test.
That would be our fallback.
That would be your fallback.
Yes.
You're still gonna get sued.
Yeah.
But. You can at least say, we, we test it monthly and it worked here. You know, we don't know why it didn't work here.
So last.
If you hadn't tested it for ten years, then they would own you. So.
Sounds to me like we should have, uh, some kind of meeting with the lake association.
Mm hmm.
Eric, you also, you can spell the same warning system?
I don't know.
But is ours unique because they're conservation boards out there?
No, I mean, there's a lot of lakes that have campground on it.
Yeah.
I don't know how this came about, I don't, I don't. I don't know the discussion that was held, I don't know.
Yeah, Okoboji have to have multiple sirens.
I would imagine Okoboji probably has some sirens, but I don't know.
They don't have a conservation campground, believe it or not.
They got state.
Is it a state one?
Yeah, they have a couple of state campgrounds.
Yeah.
In, in Okoboji or?
I.
Or is it, because there's.
Well, there's.
There's a conservation south of there.
There's numerous state campgrounds.
Gold Point probably, or not Gold Point.
Is Emerson Bay?
Fidel, uh. I, I, I'm not really sure, but. I'm, there's gotta be some on there.
Does the lake association have regular meetings then?
They just had their annual meeting this weekend, um, which I blew off because I was moving stuff out of my house. Um. I don't know how frequent they do.
So we should have representative from them come to us.
Well, yeah, or reach out, I mean. The president of Lake Association staying in the campground, so I can talk to him about setting.
Is that Steve Bean that was in here the other day?
Okay.
Had to talk to him, set up a meeting, they'd come in and we can discuss it further detail.
Yeah.
And thank you for gathering what you could. You're good.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Any old business?
Bob raised his hand online, he must have a question.
Oh.
Bob?
Yeah, good morning, guys. Uh, that was an interesting conversation, but. Doesn't everybody have the Wright County code red on their phones? And, uh, if you've got any kind of weather app on your phone. It, it knows where you're at. Um. I, just a question to ask before. You create a new tax entity, okay?
So Bob, I have code red. And it doesn't matter where I'm at. So like, when I was, um, in, um, Fort Madison. And there was a storm up here in Wright County, my code red went off when I was in Fort Madison. It, it doesn't know where you're physically located, it's your home address, what you've, what you've keyed into the system. So when you have campers out, it might be at their home place, but not at the campgrounds.
Or the lake cabins.
Or the lake cabins or, or anything, so.
I want to interview them.
Yeah.
Um. And then we would not be making a new taxing entity. Uh, there's. It would just be, like right now, they currently have the sanitary sewer, just like your townships. Uh, they have their own taxing entity also, the Lake Cornelia Association does.
The sanitary sewer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any new business?
Nope.
Meetings?
I'm curious, Dean, how did yours go? Des Moines?
Uh, it went very well. Uh, we were scheduled to have a half hour with the governor. We actually were there. Uh, for forty five minutes, there was, uh, two lawyers, every governor. And, uh. Two supervisors and then Steve Kinkle, who used to be a supervisor, he's employed by Shelby County. As their representative on the pipeline schedule. Um. They took a lot of notes. Um. And they were, and they asked us quite a few questions, so. Um. I had a, a good feeling that, uh, when we left there, that they had actually heard our concerns. Um. I also felt like I could sense the stress that the governor was under. Um, on this decision. Um, and.